For the pledge. Roll call, please.
Alderman Stray.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Alderman Rozick.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Swart.
Here.
First item is approval of minutes from January sixteenth, twenty eighteen. We need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes passed. Next item is comments and suggestions from citizens. If anybody has anything they'd like to say before the council, please come up to the podium, fill out one of the blue cards, and speak whatever you want. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Tonight, we have two items. One is licenses. Second item is treasures report. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved on seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Okay, first item under public services, consider act on a temporary crane license agreement between the city of Oconomowoc and Fowler Lake LLC. We need a motion to approve the temporary license.
So moved.
Second.
Want to give us a report on that?
Yes, thank you, sir. The Fowler Lake Village, the project going up right across the street, in order to construct the building on their confined site, will be utilizing a tower crane. The boom swing of the tower crane will cross over other properties and Right Way owned by the city, and then Small Parking Lot owned by the city. So the lease agreement for you tonight is to allow for that boom, just to swing over our properties during the construction of Fowler Lake Village.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have, do we have a motion yet?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Okay, next item, Protection and Wolfher Committee, consider act on ordinance amending sections twenty-one point one eight, period three, period four of the municipal code relating to ice fishing regulated. We need a motion to give this ordinance its first reading. So moved.
Second.
John?
Before you this evening is a ordinance revision to twenty-one eighteen in the city's ordinances. In a short version is, the city received a communication from the DNR indicating that our ordinance violated state statute. The DNR was informed by concerned fishermen or resident related to the ordinance, so that therefore they're asking for revision or a change in the language. So the original language indicated that ice fishing is prohibited in public skating rinks and skating areas once they're established. We cannot prohibit ice fishing, but what we can do is prohibit the alteration of a skating area. So we will, the changes indicated that no drilling, cutting, picking, or establishing holes in a skating area is allowed. And the purpose of that clearly is for the safety of those people out recreating and skating on the rinks. They don't expect to have a large fishing hole all sudden be in the middle of their skating area. So the ordinance has been revised and changed for your consideration, and tonight is the first reading.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, pursuant to my question at the committee meeting, because we can't, we're not allowed to regulate ice fishing. I know that, as Stan pointed out, the title obviously does not, is not the law. But what I would propose is maybe we could change it, and I guess I'm curious what Stan thinks. Either we change the title to twenty-one point one eight to ice drilling, or we drill, ice activities regulated. So it doesn't appear that we're regulating ice fishing. I just don't, you know, if somebody's looking at the regulation, if we can't do it, we should change that to something more appropriate.
Something along the lines of alteration of ice surface in city recreational areas.
That, that would be a better title, you think?
Something along the lines that, you know, that we're trying to protect the public safety.
Recreational ice regulated, recreational ice activities regulated, or something?
Yeah, something like that.
Do you want to amend it now, or do you want to?
Well, it's coming back, so staff will take this into consideration.
Yeah, I'll make it, I'll make it now. Why don't we just retitle it to recreational ice activities regulated? Yeah, I'll move, I'll move that. We just changed the title.
Second.
Okay, so the motion and the second to change the title has been, is on the floor now? Any questions?
It seems to be, oh, it seems to be there's a lot of flexibilities in that. I, I don't mind the drilling part, but altercations of the ice, I don't know.
Alterations?
Alterations of the ice. I just don't, is that any individual would figure that out?
No, the language is the language.
Right.
It's just the title.
Title. It just shouldn't say ice fishing.
That has no legal significance, okay?
All right, that's fine.
Just to make it more clear what we're doing, because we can't, we can't regulate the ice fishing. So we, I mean, if somebody opens it up, they could, we could have the same problem with like, oh, so either record, again, they're doing it again.
Right.
Without reading the whole ordinance. That's just my thought.
So we have an amendment on the floor now to change the title.
I just got one more question. Seeing you're an old goalie, would that have any effect with putting goals out there on that ice when, when they're?
No, you are regulating the, you know, the activities on that ice, and you put goals out there so that, you know, folks can play ice hockey, because without goals, it's kind of hard.
Well, yeah, well, we used to do it with wood.
Okay, so what we have on the floor now is an amendment that we're going to vote on. So we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Any other questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Now we change the title. So now we're going to go back to the original ordinance change. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Okay, next, moving on to Plan Commission recommendations. First is consider act on conditional use permit for excursion auto group located at two hundred South Silver Lake Street. We need a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
Motion.
Second.
Jason, you want to give a report on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Two items from the Plan Commission were forwarded to the common council last week at their meeting. The first is the item before you, excursion auto group is asking to do vehicle sales and trailer sales at two hundred South Silver Lake Street. We held a public hearing. No one spoke during the public hearing either for or against this. The Plan Commission did review it. The applicant was present at the meeting. There were some changes made, so an updated conditional use permit was included in, in your packets. I took the liberties of doing the changes. Everything struck out was removed by the Plan Commission. Everything in bold was, was added new. The, the highlights of the changes were, instead of five vehicles for sale at this location, they increased it to six. There's a total of twenty-one parking stalls on that site. This site is where the former Enterprise Rent-A-Car was, as well as the, city approved a former used car sales at this place called Right Way Auto Sales. So there is a history in this commercially zoned property to do auto sales. The Plan Commission also noticed that they were requesting trailers, but there was no reference to that. So they said they would allow one trailer at any given point in time to be available for sale, but the bed was not to exceed sixteen feet in length. They also discouraged the sale of boats, RVs, campers, and snowmobiles. So that was then included in, in the new permit. But the permit itself, no other changes were, were made then. It's very similar to the conditional use permit that the city approved for Right Way Auto Sales several years ago. So the Plan Commission did recommend approval of the CUP with the amendments that we talked about.
Thank you, Jason. Let's open up for discussion. Kevin?
That's a pretty small property, if I recall. Where are they going to park their cars?
Parking is a very critical point of this conditional use. It's a multi-tenant building. There's the psychic in the front half, and thermal exteriors is taking up some of the stuff in the back. And then there's two residential tenants in, in the building as well. Plus, they allow a couple of stalls for an adjacent business to park on their site. So there's a lot happening on this property. They have a master parking plan that allocates twenty-one stalls on site for the various tenants. And there's a total of six stalls that they would be utilizing for the cars. Thermal exteriors is a current tenant in the building. They are ones that would be doing the car sales. Thermal exteriors would be supplementing in their, their revenues and diversifying their sales by selling cars via, you know, the general public coming in, or the mostly internet sales.
So when Enterprise was there, how many cars did Enterprise have? They didn't have that many cars there. And, and Right Way, was that intersection done when Right Way? Because all you can do is make a right turn and a right turn in.
Right Way came in after Enterprise.
Right, but I mean, was that intersection in front of the train station? You know, that media where you can't make a left turn? I don't think that was in when the Right Way was there.
I believe it was.
Staff does believe it was there when it was approved.
Because it's such an ugly intersection to try to make a right turn there, and with a train coming and everything like that. I've gone in several times to Salvi's and for trophies, and there's only half dozen cars there, and it's kind of crazy to try to get out of there. What are their hours?
They requested, it's in the, the conditional use. We gave them nine to nine, I believe. It's in condition number five, Monday through Saturday. Obviously, no Sunday hours. Car sales are not allowed on Sundays.
So nine to nine on Saturday?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's what their hours, the window is.
Right.
That doesn't mean they're going to be open nine to nine.
Okay.
Yeah, they're only asking for, I think, to show up to five vehicles at any given time. In, in your memo, it said five. Outdoor storage and display, a maximum of five vehicles to be displayed for sale at any one time.
The Plan Commission recommended that be increased, so the permit reflects up to six.
Up to six, okay.
Up to six, because the sixth one would be either a sixth car or a trailer. But no more than one trailer.
Gotcha, I got that.
No more than one trailer.
That makes sense now.
Signage, oh, sorry. No, right. Signage is addressed here that it shall comply with the, the current zoning. Can you review that, and if there would be any exceptions associated with specials they may do, or, or things of that nature?
Right, being a car dealership, there's stereotypes about streamers and balloons and stuffed animals, and we're really cutting back on all that in the permit. It does not allow, it prohibits that type of thing. The signage would be limited to basically the business name on a sign. And we have zoning code that would talk about, you know, the square footage and the, and the height of, of a sign like that.
Would that also, that apply to the colors that we talked about that we're trying to institute as standards, so they can't be multicolor, multi?
If it's on the, if it's on the building, we don't regulate colors. There would not be a ground sign at this location.
I think when Enterprise was there, they had more than, they had about twelve cars, because I used two red cars from them. Of course, there might have not been a couple of them other buildings. There, like, the psychic guy was where they had the office. And that Right Way, he, he only lasted about two months, wasn't it?
Right Way wasn't there long, though. And that was just, I don't think the, you know, bringing cars from Milwaukee really worked for him.
No.
Jeff?
I guess my question more is, why the mix? Why no more than one trailer? Was there discussion of that at Plan Commission?
We feel that the trailer sales would be a good opportunity for the residents of the city to go there and pick up a trailer, but we didn't want it to become a trailer business. Used cars seemed appropriate, but, but not a bunch of trailers and other things such as boats or snowmobiles out there. It just looked a little more industrial. We, I think one trailer is, is sufficient, and that's what the Plan Commission recommended.
Okay, and I guess, taking that back, I, I would agree with, you know, the boats and everything else there. I don't want to see that there either. But whether there's, I mean, there's only going to be six vehicles here total, you know, so I don't personally see a reason, when there's only six, to say, well, it's got to be this mix of cars and trailers. If trailers are what sell best there, and there's no more than six trailers there under this, I would not have a problem with that, if that's what's going to sell in this community, and that's what people want.
But that's what the, that's what he requested. He, he said that was what he wanted, because he has a warehouse in Watertown where he has more trailers, that if they want to see more, they could go out there. So this is what he wanted to have.
Okay.
That was their, that was their request. So we went with what they wanted to do.
So if that changed, they wanted to have two trailers, they'd have to come back and we'd have to go through this whole process again?
Well, that's what they requested, and he said they weren't changing, so. I mean, I guess we had to go by what he requested. Kevin, or Matt?
Yeah, but this is a really small business. What I'm guessing, and I don't know if he's here, but most of this stuff's going to probably be online sales. So somebody's going to, they're going to buy a car online through one of the online trading car services or whatever, and the cars are just going to be there when they need to pick it up. And the trailer's the same thing. You know, someone's going to need the trailer, they're going to buy the trailer, it's warehoused in Watertown. They just need a spot to park it for the twelve hours it takes for the guy to come and pick it up.
Pretty much. That's pretty much it.
So I, I'm okay. I think we should let them go and let them, let them have fun, and hopefully something sticks around there for, you know, longer than a year and a half or something, so.
Kevin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, it just seems to me that there's so many restrictions that were, in this permit here, I'm trying to wrap my brain around how this guy is really going to make a good go of it, because even the Right Way was only there for a minute.
He was, he was very, he was perfectly fine with, with what was presented. It's a sup, it's, it's really what it is, is to supplement their business, because that's not their main business. This is more of a, like, like Matt was saying, an internet-based, you know, they'll have some, a website out there, and then they'll be able to provide services for that. Chairman?
But he owns the business that's in there.
He owns the thermal, yeah.
The thermal business.
Yeah.
So this is just a side.
It's kind of a side. It's like Jason said, to supplement their income.
He's already there.
I've, I've seen in, in the past with auto dealerships, that they start out with very few cars, and within a very short period of time, they have twice as many. Are we going to have a problem with that?
We have enforcement measures with the conditional use. We can always revoke the conditional use on, on the applicant. I don't believe the applicant's here. I did notify him of the meeting this evening. You know, that's what staff is here. I'll have to do the enforcement of it, if it would grow, if it would creep. But that's why we have the conditions in there. He's aware of the conditions. He was present during the Plan Commission meeting. He's received the updated copy of the, thinks he is fully aware of all of the restrictions and conditions placed on the operation.
And my, my other concern is, how many car dealerships do we need? I mean, I, I.
I don't think that's something we can really determine.
I guess, I guess, my, my only concern here is that you become so saturated that it begins to have a negative effect on the overall city. Okay? And so what happens here is, I feel that businesses begin to leave, begin to fail because of the saturation in one industry. Now, I'm not referring to any one particular industry, but there's, there's been a lot of businesses that have tried to make a good go of it, that have failed because there hasn't been enough of a population to be able to sustain it. And so that's my concern. My concern is not, I mean, if, if this guy wants, fine. But my, my concern is population and the ability to sustain, and what the, what is going to, what the city is going to ultimately look like a year, two year, five years down the road. That's my concern. It's not whether or not this guy wants this. If he wants this the way it is, fine. There's nothing we can do about that. But what concerns me is that we have a tremendous amount of businesses that have been here for a very long time that are struggling, and then all of a sudden, somebody else comes in with the same idea, thinking that they're going to make a good go of it. And all that does is it further deteriorates something that we're trying to build, and that is our downtown area. So just take that into consideration.
Questions or comments? We have a motion, second on the floor, to approve the conditional use permit. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray. Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Okay, next item is consider act amend, consider or act on amending a condominium plat for Fowler Lake Village located at the southeast corner of St. Paul and Pleasant Streets. We need a motion to approve or the amendment of the condominium plat.
Motion.
Second.
Jason?
Thank you. The Plan Commission reviewed this amendment to the condominium plat for Fowler Lake Village, and they did recommend approval to the common council. Sub, this type of plat, it's a condominium plat, it's, has the same process as a subdivision in which it goes through the Plan Commission, and then ultimately is approved and reviewed by the common council. This plat that is before you does not change the exterior of the building. It does not change the height, or the, adds any square footage to the building footprint. What this does is it adds to the number of residential units from thirty-eight units to forty-four units. It adds six units by shifting the internal walls and making some of the larger units a little smaller. So it adds two units on both the third, fourth, and fifth levels. So two of each, on each level is added. There is some non-residential units on the ground floor. Those are not changing. There was eight there to begin with, and there's eight there now. So there's six new residential units. This footprint and overall square footage of the building is staying exactly the same. The applicant has expressed that they feel this is a, a better market for these size units than, than the larger units than what was contained in the original plat. They do not want to get this plat, you know, approved and recorded until it is approved by the common council. Staff looked at this request. Biggest concern that was noted was the parking. There was a hundred and three parking stalls with the original, and there's a hundred and three stalls with the proposal. That is not changing with the six additional units. But staff still feels, even with the additional units, there should be plenty of parking on site for the, the uses being proposed. You know, this is so much better than, than other buildings that supply no parking at all. So a hundred and three onsite stalls in the two levels should be very adequate for the, the proposed use. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Open up for comment. Kevin?
It's, it's my understanding that the city engineer is part of the planning commission. Am I correct?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Whereas I do understand, and I think Stan has brought this to my attention, that the staff recommendation form, which is on, I think, page four there, is, is just there for our own edification. I see no signature date or anything, which leads me to believe that the city engineer has not looked at this or was available to sign.
Well, Stan, it does sit on the Plan Commission, and he did vote for it, in favor of it, and um.
He made the motion.
Yeah.
He made the motion to approve it.
He does not work in this building, and sometimes it's difficult to get his signature. It's, you know, this was a, an item that was placed on the agenda, and we, he, we just did not have the opportunity to have him sign off on it. It, it was after the other one was signed off on. So it's partially my fault as well for coordinating, you know, with him, but it was just, we, it did not meet up with our schedules to have him come in and, and sign off on it. But he is in favor of it. He did review it. He is aware of it, and he did vote for it at Plan Commission.
Can I?
Yep.
Okay. Water. It says verify water usage estimate due to proposed building change. What is he referring to that? Is he stating that there's more, that he's concerned?
I can speak to that.
Okay.
When we changed the number of units, when we do the water estimates for the impact fees that are due, it's based on the number of residential equivalency connections. So with the change in units, we needed the recalculation of the water usage to make sure that that fee was calculated appropriately, and that did come in since the sign off. And we have that information, and have been able to revise that fee calculation accordingly. Yes.
Yep.
Anything else, Kevin?
Yeah, last thing. Director of Finance talking about the impact fees, and the new, I gather it must be referring to some sort of a new calculation?
It's the same thing. With the increased number of units, the impact fee will, will go up a little bit due to the number of, the impact increase.
Or park and rec and everything, right?
Right, for all the.
All the impact fees.
Highways, park and rec. Yeah. Thank you.
Good questions.
It's my understanding that part of the thought behind this reconfiguration for the condos is to, to hit us a, a different market with smaller units, a small, a lower price point, as a result of all three projects kind of working simultaneously within, within the city. So as I look at it, and what I understand about the real estate market, I think it's a, it's a, it's a prudent play by the developer to, to make sure that those units sell in a reasonable amount of time, and they don't have a bunch of empty units sitting with a heavier leaning, higher rate. So for all those reasons, I am, I'm, I'm glad to see it. It also brings a few more people into the downtown. The parking, and we talked about this a little bit, I don't think everybody's going to be there with, with their cars during normal working hours. Maybe, maybe there could be some conversation with the owners to, to free up some of those dedicated spots while they're not there for general use. I think that might be a, a nice, nice add to the, to the community in which it serves. And there were some comments made, and the general public not understanding exactly what this, this alteration is providing for. And I'm glad that you, you clarified that, and hopefully that's picked up in the general public, that they're not adding another floor, they're not changing the footprint of the overall building, we're not adding another, another project. It's, it's an internal change to the existing footprint. So there's no major impact to the aesthetics that I think everybody really likes and what's going in, so.
Tom?
I, I got to agree with you on those, you know, the idea of, of smaller units and that. But, but having a lap or two around the pool in the restaurant business and things like that, and you're losing six or seven more parking stalls, that's going to be a tough one. And you're going to have other retailers down below there. I mean, that's a, that'd be a tough one.
One of the things I do add, though, is they're, they're, they're removing nine cuts in the Pleasant Street and St. Paul to only one, so that will pick up a few parking stalls.
That's still, trust me.
Yeah, but it still helps.
And, uh, it won't, but.
Jeff?
I think in regard to that, this is the first development that I've seen come through to council that actually had many more. I don't know exactly how many, but it was significantly more parking spaces than what the residents required. And adding in the retail, I mean, there is, there was way, way, way more offered than what we've ever seen. So it, it still is exceeding, and it's helping our parking problem downtown. It may not be helping quite as much now with a couple more apartments or condos in there, but it still is far exceeding what our requirement is, and I applaud them for adding that in. I think it'll be, I think it'll be a nice addition.
Other comments?
I got a, I have a quick question. Of these hundred and three enclosed parking stalls, how many of those are actually available for customers, for a restaurant, or for any of the shops that might be there? I don't think any of them are, are they? They're all enclosed? They're all inside?
General.
So are there, of those hundred and three parking stalls, how many are actually open to the general public?
There, there, there will be some of those for the non-resident.
There will be some of those for the non-residential uses reserved. I don't have the number right in front of me. It's approximately twenty. It'll be for employees of the businesses. There will be some of them.
Right, but none of those are going to actually be, you know, me driving downtown to be able to park there to go into the restaurant. I will find parking on the city street and the parking lot across the street. I won't be using the ones in the enclosed facility anyhow.
Yeah, for commercial use and guests, there's twenty-five parking stalls per my notes here.
So, you could, I think you could. We could drive, I plan to park there during city council meetings, so.
We'll have a spot for you.
When it's snowing or raining.
We'll put a meter up there for you.
I don't think that this is general public parking. You won't see a general public parking sign out there where you can pull in, but the intent is to have that available for the commercial, the additional stalls, is the commercial spaces, their guests, their customers, their employees, but it won't be general public parking.
What that does is it keeps the employee parking off the streets and taking up other people's spots. So, they won't be adding any congestion to the existing parking lots that are already there, and I think that's a big plus. Because right now, if somebody opens a business and there's no parking available, they'll take whatever spot they can get. This way, it's always, it's all self-contained.
I'm glad to see them being proactive about selling their units, and I think by opening up another niche, smaller unit, smaller units available, I think you're going to see more people, a bigger variety of people in the community that way. So, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, it's always good to have more, more and different. Any other questions?
Just in the future, and like I said before, I know it's not going to make much of a difference, but I'd really like to see all the signatures on here. It'd make me sleep better at night.
We'll make sure we get that before they come out to the packets. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Could you call the roll, please?
Alderman Stray. Alderman Kavieski. Alderman Miller. Alderman Rosick. Alderman Shaw. Alderman Ellis. Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Okay, next item is under new business, consider or act on amendment to offer to purchase for eleven oh one Silver Lake Street by Matter Senior Living LLC. We need a motion to approve the amendment. So moved?
Second.
Report on that. The council approved previously the offered purchase for the property at eleven oh one Silver Lake Street in December fifth of 2017. One of the provisions allowed the assignment of the agreement to, from the buyer to another assignee, and Sierra Land Holdings assigned their, the agreement to Matter Senior Living. So, Matter Senior Living is requesting an extension of their study period that was provided under the offer to purchase. The original study period was a hundred and fifty-day period from the date of the acceptance of the offer, so that would have been May fifth. With the assignment to a new entity, they would like to extend that period to do their due diligence, so the request is to extend that to July fifth. In addition, they're evaluating the type of units that they would like to construct on this site. The original offer to purchase had noted sixty-four units. Twenty-four of those would be an assisted living, forty senior apartments. They're now requesting a potential of up to eighty units. Sixty-four units still remaining within that original building. Twenty-four of those potentially memory care, forty assisted living. They'll be doing their market study to determine what the actual demand for those units would be, and then they would like to evaluate the option of potentially developing that northern part of the site. If you recall, we had the soil, soils testing done. They're thinking that they may be able to put some structures in there to potentially put some units in there. So, they're, they would like to evaluate that for four, four-unit independent living structures. So, before you tonight is the consideration for the amendment to the offer to purchase. So, the two provisions really that are changing are the extension of the study period and the request for the additional units on that site.
If my memory serves me correct, that the original bid for this was a lot more money because that northern half was not buildable.
Our original ask was more, the original offer was less.
Nah.
No one offered any more than what this is. This is the highest offer we ever received on this property.
Can we go back in the records and look at that?
Go ahead.
Yep. The mayor is correct.
Jeff?
And this still is a taxable entity, so then the, if they were to find that they could build additional buildings, it's just going to, I think we were talking eight to ten million originally.
Yeah, I think that was in the area. It'd be, I think he said about one point eight, eight more, so ten to twelve.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Tom, the question we were, we deliberated when we were talking about this price was if that north end was going to be buildable, would we be able to go back and ask for more sale price? And what we were told was no, we would not be able to. We agreed for that four hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty thousand?
Fifty, yeah.
For the whole thing, whether that end is buildable or not.
I must have not been here for that meeting.
One of the things we get out of it is the taxable, you know, income off that property, and the cost to build there is going to be more because of the soil conditions. Who's over here next? Someone else? It wasn't, sorry, Derek, you had a question.
Is there anything that prevents, you know, the whole non-taxable entity? Is there anything that prevents them from selling this to a non, for a 501(c) corporation or whatever? I think it's a 501(c). Stan?
Is there anything that prevents them from selling it to a nonprofit entity in the future? Probably not, right?
No.
No.
But wouldn't we have the ability then to pursue a pilot agreement at that time?
They can't, they don't have the...
They volunteer it. I can't stress to you enough that there is absolutely no teeth in a pilot agreement. Does, if it was sold to a non-taxable entity, is it a conditional use permit? That we would have to put that into requirements? It's the use. I'd have to take a look at what is being proposed and look at the zoning ordinance and see whether or not it's permitted as a matter of right.
We haven't rezoned it at this point, have we?
Haven't done anything with it yet. Well, then they have no right to build anything.
Right.
But regarding Derek's comment, if it was built and sold in the future, so... If it's built and sold in the future?
Anything we can do to prevent that?
Same thing with Lisbon. But the question is then, as part of the conditional use permit, can it be emphasized that if there was not a, if it was not taxable, that it would have to be a pilot agreement with full city taxes paid? You can't force somebody to pay something out of the kindness of their heart that violates the state statute. If they're not taxable, they're not taxable. They don't have to volunteer to pay. Even if it's part of the condition? Oh, then you're in big trouble. Yeah, you do not put those conditions in a conditional use permit. Okay.
I was just going to clarify, for zoning, right now, this site is currently zoned institutional public, which is generally for people that don't pay taxes, the hospitals, the churches, the schools. This site would be rezoned. The Plan Commission is acting on it next month, and if it's moved forward, it would come to the common council to change the zoning to a residential district, a multifamily district. And you can see, I put this slide up, the last thing in the red box there says twenty-four units CBRF. CBRFs for nine or more clients do require a conditional use permit. We'll have to talk about the conditions that we put on them, but, so there will be a little bit of teeth in the conditions that we put on it, but according to our attorney, we can't talk about taxes and those, so. But we'll, you know, we will require conditional use. There will be a public hearing for the zoning change as well as the use. There'll be public hearings. But tonight, they're just talking about changing it to include the additional units and amending the purchase.
This is just basically to extend the time so they can do their studies. Let's, I'll get you your second one. Who was over here?
It wasn't taxable before, I mean, it was YMCA, so we'd never taxed it forever and ever.
This property's never been paid taxes.
So, even if we, let's say we just get ten years of taxable income out of it, all these units, and then they sell it to Lutheran Homes of whatever, and it becomes non-taxable, well, I mean, still better than what it was, which was sitting vacant and not taxable for years. So, I mean, it's a win-win, I think.
And it provides a service the community needs.
Yeah, and they're going to build a lot of stuff, and it's going to be taxable for a while, and, you know.
Go back to Lou?
Yeah.
The original buildable area had infrastructure to it because it was the old Y site. With the extension building to the north, you'd have to run additional infrastructure to support those buildings, correct? And that would be, that cost would be picked up by the developer?
They would have to do that, yeah.
We have not completed the technical review yet, so I'm not sure what infrastructure's required. Our fire department may want hydrants access, you know, around the building, which would be water mains. You know, those types of questions haven't been done yet. Also, you know, Silver Lake, does that need any improvements? That's county in there, so we'll have to see. We're just not at that point yet, but there's going to, any public improvements needed for this would be at the cost of the applicant.
Yeah, this is just to extend the time period, so they, because if you look at it now, it's covered in snow, and there's, they've been using it as snow stars, so they can't get in and do any of their tests until, maybe it's not covered today anymore, but they still have to get in and do all their soil testing, soil borings, and things like that, so. Any other questions? Mike?
So, like you said, this basically is just giving them another hundred and fifty days. It's not like it's sold yet.
It's not a hundred and fifty, is it? What is it? Another two months?
It's, it extends it from May fifth to July fifth.
Okay, two months, another sixty days.
It's just giving them more time to take a look to see if they're able to do, because they had, definitely North Side, they kept saying it was bogged and they couldn't build.
Yeah, and the developers has a way to do it, he says, so. And I think this would give, you know, this would be a nice, right on a golf course.
Right.
Senior living, independent living, so.
Yeah.
Well, it's what a lot of residents are looking for.
Yeah, it's an ideal spot.
Yeah. So, any other questions?
Seeing none, we have a motion, a second on the floor, to extend the deadline to July fifth. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray. Alderman Kavieski. Alderman Miller. Alderman Rosick. Alderman Shaw. Alderman Ellis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Swart.
Moving on, consider act on resolution awarding contract for strategic planning consultant for 2018. We need a motion to approve the awarding of the contract. Make the motion. Second. Lori?
Before you tonight is a recommendation to hire a consultant for the city's first formal strategic planning process. We went through the city's RFP process. Through that, we received four proposals. The proposals were evaluated using the city's qualifications-based evaluation process. The results of that evaluation are attached in your packet. Through the process, the recommendation is to hire Better Dash Faster Consulting out of Madison, Wisconsin for the amount of five thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Thank you, Lori. Questions, concerns? Matt?
Yeah, I expressed some of my concerns with this entire process. Lori, thanks for, I think the RFP was pretty good, and I'm, like I said in the committee meeting, I was happy that the RFP was attached with the actual proposal that won, and that we got some more numbers out of the scoring process, which was, I think, helpful for us to evaluate whether it was done appropriately. It did come in under budget, but I was reminded that I did vote against this at the budget cycle. I'm going to vote against it again here tonight, and it's not because, I think maybe some people misunderstood me in the meeting. I think a strategic plan is important. I think we should have a strategic plan. I just don't think we should pay six thousand dollars to have somebody come in and basically take notes during our meetings and prepare it. I think we are capable within the city to do this ourselves and to save some taxpayer money. I think it's important as we move into the next budget cycle here in a few months, that we start thinking about what these things cost. You know, based on our millerate in the median house, this is five to six homes of tax value that we're spending on somebody to basically take notes, put together a fancy PowerPoint, and regurgitate what we're going to give him in these committee, the whole meetings. I think it's something we could do ourselves, so that's why I'm voting against it.
Thank you, Matt. Lou?
I believe the strategic plan is going to be more than just notes. I think it's going to help us as a council and a city with all the department heads and additional input, gather that information, and help us make some decisions in how we move forward. So, to that concern of just hiring somebody for six thousand dollars to take notes, I think we're going to get much more than that. I've participated in strategic planning sessions over the course of my career, and from what I did in research with this organization, I believe we're going to see at least six thousand dollars worth of value, and I'm excited to see what the result is and how we engage with council, the department heads, and the community, and then be able to communicate back out to the community what that vision looks like through our strategic plan.
Thank you, Lou.
If this were a hundred thousand dollars, I'd have a problem with it, but for six thousand dollars, I think we've got it, somebody who is an expert doing this, they'd have a good background of communities that they've worked in, they've worked with Lori when she was with Stoughton, is that what?
Correct.
And she thought they had good results. Sometimes it's worth it to hire somebody to do the job. Today, yesterday, I took my car in. I like to fix my car if I can, but sometimes you take it in to the expert to get it done right, and you pay a little bit for it, but hopefully you get a better, better results in the end. Plus, the last thing I'd say is you have an objective observer with no skin in the game that can listen to what everybody wants and kind of formulate it, rather than having one particular department head maybe work on it who wants their department to be successful just as much as everybody else's, but it's hard to take yourself out of that position, I think.
Jeff?
I would agree with that. I've been through it three times. This will be the fourth time I've ever gone through a process like this, but first time in government. But in one of those occasions, it was not directed by somebody from outside, and it was an absolute fiasco because of the fact that the same people that were trying to coordinate and run the program were also supposed to be thinking about what they were hearing and offering input back into that, and that's very, very difficult to do. And just from the standpoint of keeping everybody on task, generating what we want to have come out of it, the additional staff time that we would put into this alone, if we tried to do it on our own, would be equal or exceeding what this is. So, I think this is a very, very good way to go, and I'm glad we're going to do it this way.
Okay. Mike, we'll go with Mike first.
I agree with you guys. I just think this is a, it's not that expensive, and I do think it's nice to have another eye looking at the project and be able to give us a little bit more options and a little bit more choice to it. So, I a hundred percent for this.
Matt?
Just, I'm not trying to pick a fight with the whole council, although sometimes I do, I do like doing that. So, some of the, some of the things we've done that have been really good internally are like our downtown overlay plan, our East Wisconsin overlay that we worked on. I even think like a lot of the, what happened with the boardwalk, even though there was some vision there in the past, those are things that council pushed forward based on what constituents wanted us to do, based on things that we identified as needs and moved forward. This council, like I said in the committee meeting, could change in a year, and all, whatever effort we put into this and money we spend could just evaporate. So, we've seen that already. When I got elected four years ago, there was a seat change on the council, and everything that the previous council and previous mayor tried to do completely changed. So, I do think it's, I still think it's a waste of money. I'm not unpersuaded by what some of you have said about having the independent eye come in, but, you know, our budget went up last year by one point two percent. Our taxes went up, and I think we have to try as we go through these budgets and we see these type of items come up, is really strategically think about what we can cut and what we really, really need to try to get back to at least a zero-sum game on the taxes, so. I, that's it. Yeah, I'm not going to argue anymore, and I won't pick any more fights tonight, I don't think.
Kevin, did you have something?
His experience?
I'm sorry?
What is his experience?
Oh, if you take a look in the packet, you'll see probably two pages of municipalities that he has worked with putting together strategic plans. Similar to the committee, the whole meeting, I encourage you to look at those references and take a look at those websites and see what the deliverables are and how other cities have put together their plans. Taking a look at that, I think will help you a lot as we move forward in the process, to know what to expect as we, as we go ahead.
Charlie?
Yeah, I think this is one of the easier decisions that we have to make, because this is, it went through the points process. It was evaluated, it got the most amount of points, and it also cost a little... It was evaluated, it got the most amount of points, and it also cost the least, so this one to me is a no-brainer.
Yeah. Lou?
Just one more, uh, more of a statement, because I've, I've gotten a lot of, uh, feedback from some of the citizens in, in my, my district about our purchasing process, and we, we had nine firms engage initially in this RFP. Seven actually engaged with questions, and we had four.
Proposals.
Proposals come back, and I think that's, that shows a good process as well. And I think that the city continues to work on our process for, um, engaging with the marketplace, and if this is indicative of, of what we hopefully will see with all bids going forward, I think that's a, it's a great move, um, for the city and for what we get for what we spend.
Tom?
I agree with you, Matt. Um, you know, we're here to try to keep the taxes down and all the other good stuff, but, you know, the six grand or five grand, that's fully a bargain. If it had gone to ten or eight or nine or ten or twelve, I would've said nay, but.
Tom? Or not Tom, uh, Jeff?
Again?
I think one of the other things that, that we kinda lose sight of here is the fact that the city has never, ever gone through this. In different life, working with the city, um, and I'm sure mayor, those of us that have, have been around the city and, and the council for, you know, twenty, thirty years, you can go back and you can see where, because we didn't have a plan like this, we also have a lot of unfinished business in the city, and it just fell by the wayside because it wasn't documented, it wasn't part of a plan. And I think what I see here is the fact that, uh, rather than a new council coming in or a new mayor coming in and all of a sudden just being able to change a whole bunch of different things because of their own ideas, it's not something that you're gonna change without going back and looking at this and having a good discussion about it and trying to decide, well, why did we put that on? Why did we put something in our plan in the nineteen fifties that we still have not completed? And, um, that was one of the reasons why several years ago, when I ran for council, it was, it was a priority for me to try to go back and look at some of those things and say, okay, we can't do it all at one time, but how do we, how do we slot that in and how do we make that happen? So, I'm very glad we're gonna, we're gonna do it this way, because I think that's what's gonna be the result here.
Kevin?
I think Jeff, you, you said something that was, uh, quite interesting, and that was the fact that the cost associated with us bringing it in-house would or could exceed what we're going to be, uh, potentially giving this individual. That's a very good point. It's a very good point.
You said you were dubbed, Matt?
Yeah, I, you know, I shouldn't, I should never say that, right? So, one of the things Jeff, you said, and I, I don't know why I'm so passionate about this, but, um, one of the things you said that, you know, new councils just come in and they just can't just change things without looking, that's exactly what we're supposed to do as representatives when we're re-elected, when people are elected or re-elected, is to go in and change what a previous council did you didn't like. That's the form, that's the reason we have representative government. I don't want, I don't, I don't want something that can't be changed. Like, we, we, the new council should come in, uh, in April, if it's different than what we have here today, and change everything we did and start over. And they don't need a new strategic plan, they don't need any of this. But, you know, with, with all that being said, I look at some of the things that are in the packet, and it, you know, here's your guiding principles on one for the city of Monona. Collaborate, we will work together. Duh. I mean, ju, you look at some of the stuff that's in these strategic plans, and there's nothing of substance really in them. So, that's my concern, is we're not, we're not paying for anything of substance. We're paying for, you know, trigger phrases and, you know, look, here's another one, transparent. We will be transparent in providing services. I mean, isn't that kinda what we should do? Do we really need someone to tell us that needs to be our guiding principle? That will be responsive to our electorate? I mean, it just, I think it's a silly process. So, I will engage with it, though, and I will be here for the meetings and offer whatever support I can, so.
Kevin?
How long is this contract?
The process will take, start to finish about nine weeks.
But how long will his contract be, assuming that he, um, is awarded? This, how long would his contract, is it a year, five years, forever?
It's about nine weeks.
It's this project only.
This project only.
Yes.
Right. Um, this is a, a project that, you know, our deliverable is our current strategic plan, as we talked about before. This is something that we will review on an annual basis that you can update or make changes to. As new things come into the city, those are things that we'll wanna document in the future and add to our plan or, you know, change it throughout the years as we work on it.
So, so the bottom line here is if we are not pleased with the outcome of what this gentleman or his, his firm does, we don't have to rehire him at all for anything.
No, yeah, no, we're not, it, it's not an ongoing thing, it's just a one-time shot.
A one-time shot.
You know, this is a collab, this is a collaborative, um, participatory process. It's not like he's going to give you something and you're going to like it or not like it. This is, this is the council and the department heads and the mayor and the city administrator getting together and putting this together, and he's the facilitator in that process.
You know, you're looking at, how many times have people said, you guys don't have a plan? You really don't know what you're doing. And, and, and it, whenever you make a decision. This way, we're looking at something so that we have something there that says, this is the course we wanna take this year. And there's plenty of projects, there's plenty of things that we wanna do over the next six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months that this will put together. Will things come up that change it? Of course they will. There'll be new projects, there'll be new, new priorities, but this gives us a baseline. And we'll just have to, you know, work with it that way. It'll make budgeting easier, it'll make project management easier, it'll, it'll, it'll just give everything a, a flow. And make this, we treat, we treat our city as a business, basically. Um, we have us as the board, we have the city's administrator who runs everything, and the city staff. So, this makes, it keeps it as a business-type function, and that's how we can keep costs stable. So, that's, that's what we're looking for.
One final comment. Matt, I don't say this real often, but I do agree with you with respect to the.
Oh, no, we, we agreed all the way down the thing. It was eight oh for just about everything.
No, I, 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 I agree with you with, with, with respect to, you know, every time a council comes in, they oughta take a look at this, and, and, and that's exactly my point, uh, is the fact that you don't drop things off or we don't not do things because of, um, one or two people's direction, which we, I don't think we have an issue with that with the council and, and the mayor that we have now, certainly, but that has been an issue with the city in the past. And all I'm saying is get a plan in place that requires that there be dialogue before we, we start forgetting about things. And you are right in saying that we'd have done some great things with our zoning and, and whatever. And I, I guess what I would say is the fact that once the plan is in place, that is what our job from then on is, is to take all those things that we have in our vision for the city and do the same things that we've done in the past on zoning and make those things happen. And I, I guess, I, I think that the council now is much better at that than prior councils have been going way back, the twenty or thirty years that I mentioned. But, um, again, because people change, sometimes the plan is what's required to keep them on the straight and narrow, so.
And, and I don't disagree with that either, Jeff. I, and I'm happy, I really do wanna participate in this, cause what I don't wanna see is what I see for their examples, which is guiding principles like for the Portage County that says, we will continually strive to be strategic and responsible. That gives us nothing. I think when we do this process, we're gonna have to be very laser-focused. I don't want a bunch of phrases and, and rehashed, you know, strategic plans from other counties and other communities. It needs to be laser-focused on what we want, and then maybe we can get a good strategic plan out of it. If we're just gonna get cut-and-paste jobs out of guiding principles from all these other communities and all this other nonsense that's in here, it's gonna be useless. So, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping to engage it in that we actually get laser-focused on it, so.
Just to respond to that, um, that is, there, the strategic plan example that you're referring to, those are some higher-level things, but it does drill down further into more detail. So, there, there, if you go into some of the examples, um, you'll, you will see laser-focused priorities and specifics on, um, how to keep accountable and things of that nature as well. So, you need some guiding principles, um, and some, you know, mission and vision, the touchy-feely things to kinda guide that to get into the specifics, so that, we will be getting to that level. Yeah.
Derek, you have a look, you want to say something?
One more thing. I think this is good, because it should get some of our, our goals down, just like any self-help course. You wanna write down your, your goals, you wanna set the task and then prioritize. Most people don't do that. We have somebody who's gonna help us do that and maintain it. We have to maintain it, and we should keep revisiting it. Nothing should be etched in stone that we have to do that, but every council should revisit it to see what the past wanted to do, and if there's time to change, we can change it at that point.
I mean, it's, it's like any plan, I mean, the downtown plan that was put together ten, twelve years ago. I mean, we still look at that, because that was put together by a consulting group, it was put together by citizen-focused groups, it was put together, it was a, a large collaborative effort to get what we did. And, and some of the things that were discussed in there was like, how do we keep downtown viable? And one of us, we have to have more people that live downtown. Well, if you look around, that's what we're finally doing. It took a long time to get there, but that's, what we're doing is to follow that directive that we had ten, twelve years ago. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion to the second on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Stray.
Aye.
That's a yea?
Yea.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
Okay, staff reports tonight. We have, we're starting our, our, uh, department reports, and our first report is about the library.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just gonna call up my PowerPoint here. Well, good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me to speak to you tonight. My name is Betsy Black, and I am the library director. Um, I'll begin with what happened at the library in two thousand seventeen, and we'll finish with a preview of two thousand eighteen. In two thousand seventeen, the library made a number of updates to our building and facilities, many of which you can see on this slide. Moving from left to right, the exterior signs with added lighting have increased our visibility. In the middle, our six study rooms were modernized this past year and are now quiet, comfortable places to work. And on the right, the new boiler controls and motors have resulted in significant energy savings. The library also made numerous improvements in our accessibility to the building, a few of which are pictured here. These efforts were highlighted in a two thousand seventeen article by Bridges Library System, which was shared statewide by the Wisconsin Library Association. Our community enjoyed a number of new library programs in two thousand and seventeen, especially for tweens and teens. It's a little close. Get that adjusted. One of our programs was called Escape from Snape. Building on the current popularity of escape rooms and the never-ending popularity of Harry Potter, this event was an enormous hit. It was offered in the evening for teens and during the day for kids and families. One team of teens and one team of kids are pictured here. The high school's Cooney Robotics team led a coding club for tweens last summer. This provided leadership experience for the high school students and bolstered STEM skills for the attendees. The teen filmless film club writes, directs, acts, and then produces short films. The club is currently creating short films for the library's one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary, which will be linked on the library's website and Facebook page. And lastly, the teen after-hours programs offered this summer were a huge hit. You can see here, these were held after the library closed on three Friday nights last summer, um, and each night had a theme. Pictured here is a live chess match inspired by Harry Potter. The library also unveiled some new materials in our, uh, new features in our materials collections. By far, the most popular addition to our materials this year was the Lucky Day collection, part of which is shown here. This is an extra collection of high-demand titles that normally have a long wait list. Lucky Day items cannot be placed on hold, it's your lucky day if they're on the shelf when you arrive at the library. In two thousand seventeen, items in the Lucky Day collection were checked out a whopping two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two times. People in our community value their library, as shown by the following statistics. These statistics are available in your handouts, and I have copies here for anyone else who's interested. Uh, our total circulation was up two point three percent in two thousand seventeen. Our circulation to city residents was up six and a half percent. New library card holders was up thirteen point six percent, and our library visits were up three and a half percent. Just to give you an idea of how many people we're talking about, more than one hundred and forty-two thousand visitors checked out over two hundred and eighty thousand items, not including eBooks. With eBooks, the total is closer to three hundred and ten thousand. The library held four hundred and fourteen programs and answered thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-five reference questions. So, clearly, two thousand seventeen was a busy year. What's coming up in two thousand eighteen? We started the year off with a bang, when the library was named most loved library in the Waukesha Lake Country area by the Families Activities website, Hula Frog. The library turns, one hundred and twenty-five years old in two thousand eighteen, making it one of the oldest libraries in the state. There's a full year of fun planned in honor of the anniversary. Five Wi-Fi hotspots will be available for checkout. As we all know, whoops, more and more work, school assignments, and life tasks like paying bills are done online. The library's hotspots will essentially enable a patron to check out the internet for a week. The Bridges Library System funded the startup costs for this program. The library has also joined the Lake Country Library's Memory Project. This program provides opportunities for people with dementia and their care partners to gather, learn something new, and have fun. This is a perfect complement to Economawalk being a dementia-friendly community. This month, all libraries, all the twenty-four public libraries in our library system are showing our citizens how libraries transform lives and make communities stronger with a range of programs and initiatives through the Libraries Transform Campaign. And a flyer about that program coming up this Saturday is on the back of your statistics sheet. Thank you for all you do to support the library and spread the word that the library is more than a smart investment. Strong libraries build strong communities. Thank you, council, mayor, Sarah, colleagues, and community members, for your support and enthusiasm for your library. Because of your support, our library is helping transform our community and the lives of the folks who live here. Yours to a great year in two thousand eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask you about the, uh, being recognized as the best library. How, you wanna go through that a little bit?
Sure, yes. Well, it was, we actually had the honor last year as well, and last year was a complete surprise to us. I think Hula Frog was a little newer last year, but Hula Frog is a website where, um, local events, activities, things to do with the kids are posted online, and if you've done the activity or you recommend the activity to others, you hit a little, like a heart, a little love button, and then there's voting. So, I, um, somehow through that process, there's, there's since kind of a contest in February, building on the love theme with Valentine's Day. Uh, last year, we shared the honor with Waukesha Public Library, and this year, we have it all to ourselves.
No, our, the, we're not the biggest library by far.
By far, no, we are not.
So, we're doing better than the bigger ones and as good as, that's really good. I'm really proud of that.
Thank you. I'll pass that along. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thanks for the good report.
My pleasure.
Betsy, who?
Uh, any other, uh, staff reports?
Other reports tonight?
Uh, reports and comments from Alderman.
I just wanted to compliment you, Betsy, on everything you're doing down there and dedicated staff. It's a wonderful facility, you're doing a great job. Please pass it on and thank them for us.
I will. Thank you, that means so much to hear that. Um, one of my slides that I had to cut for time is a picture of the team that we have at the library, just a super dedicated, passionate, talented, uh, detail-oriented, organized team that we're so blessed to have, um, both staff and volunteers, our board of trustees, uh, and just, we really appreciate all the work they do, and I'll, I'll pass along those kind words. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from Alderman? Seeing none, reports, comments from mayor. I was just, uh, just wanted to mention that, uh, last Thursday, I did the, uh, the chamber breakfast and did the State of the City address at the community center, well, very well attended. Uh, we did put it out online, so if anybody wants to see it, um, it's available to the public, to the Alderman, whoever wants to look at it. And, uh, it turned out really good, we had a nice crowd. That's all I had. Next item is a closed session, so we won't, going into closed session, per Wisconsin stats, uh, nineteen point eight five per N one per N E deliberating and negotiating, gaining the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Basically, this is on the sale of public right away. So, we need a motion to go to closed session? Some of them?
Second.
Moving seconded, Alderman, uh, uh, call the roll, please.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis. Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Swart.
Aye.
We're now adjourned from open session.